I'll probably London Dairy Planning Board meeting to order for September 7th, 2011. I just want to let everyone know that if we have an emergency and need to evacuate, this room has two exits. They're on the right-hand side of the audience, at the front and the back of the room. If we do need to evacuate, we ask you to proceed through the exit closest to you, go outside, rain or shine, and move away from the building. And don't come back into our fire officials, I've instructed everyone to do so. I'd like to ask everyone to please rise and pledge allegiance to the American flag.
(inaudible)
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 Trying to get myself situated.
Oh, you're not.
It's the rules.
Okay, we do have a quorum. And, let's see, Chris is away on business, so I'll appoint Letha to vote for Chris. And Scott's not here. I'd like to welcome Maria Newman, who is our newest member, and she's an alternate. And...
Thank you.
This is on-the-job training, basically.
Yes.
And lots of reading, if you so desire.
Absolutely.
There's tons to read. Especially boring state statutes.
Yeah.
That I have to read 15 times to try to figure it out. And Dana was appointed as a full member by the town council at the last meeting. And... Welcome.
Thank you.
Where we were before.
(laughing)
Deja vu.
Yeah. Our meeting has two parts to it. The first part is administrative board work, where we got our business done. The second part is for being the first Wednesday of the month. This is for new plans. We only have one new plan tonight. Not to say it'll be quick and easy or anything, but we'll go back to administrative board work and get that completed, and then we'll get on to the public hearing. First thing we have is the development of regional impact determinations, industrial subdivision, Akira Way, tax map 28, lot 31. And you have this, Andre?
Yes, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This lot is located off Akira Way, again, map 28, lot 31. Currently, L3 Insight Technology resides on it. They're looking to subdivide that parcel into two parcels. Staff recommends that the project is not a development of regional impact, it does not meet any of the regional impact rider lines suggested by Southern Hampshire Planning Commission.
Okay, I'll take a motion to make that determination. So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion, and second by Rick. Any discussion by the board? Sign none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Anyone abstaining? Chair votes affirmative, and the motion carries. And next item is dog park committee. They need a planning board member-
Correct.
-on the dog park committee. And Tom could probably fill us in on anything relating to the dog park, but I would ask for volunteers. I was interested in being on the... I have no idea what the concept of it is, or the requirements, or what's the expectation there.
I think it's going to be nine people on it, and frankly, it's going to be, I think they extended it out for like, two years to speak, to come to a report, if I remember correctly.
So the report will come back to town council?
Yeah. About establishing a dog park somewhere in town land somewhere.
Okay. Anyone have any interest? Dog lovers?
Who's not here?
Chris.
Point absenched.
Actually, Scott's not here.
I'm making sure that Scott be in.
Okay. I have a motion-
By acclamation.
Something happens at work, too, if you're absent from them, you get silenced. Okay, motion for Scott, second by-
Second.
Second by Rick.
(inaudible)
Any discussion on that motion? No? Okay, sign, is there no discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Abstentions, chair votes affirmative, and Scott Benson is a member.
(inaudible)
Thank you, Scott.
Okay. That takes care of that. So, next item, okay, notice of lot merger.
All right, for the record, he is driving down here now because he's watching.
Well, you can ask for reconsideration.
You guys can hand ready for the panic button.
What do you do at, we don't have town meeting anymore, what do you do at town meeting?
Motion for no reconsideration.
Restrict reconsideration.
Yeah, that's like the town meeting, a school district meeting. Okay, notice of lot merger. Patricia Panachoko, I don't know if I'm pronouncing it right.
Siakam.
Okay. Tax map seven lots, seven and eight, nine and 10. I found it here, so any-
Seven and eight, or just nine and 10?
Any background?
Eight get combined, nine and 10 get combined.
Okay. I think this was from a subdivision, wasn't it?
They're going to do, it's behind Dunkin' Donuts, they're going to put up some duplexes.
Okay. Condition of variance granted for lack of legal frontage, but London Dairy zoning board of adjustment in case 720, 2011-2.
Don't have the picture in there.
Yeah.
Here it is.
Tax map seven lots nine and 10 into one duplex lot, and tax map seven, lots seven and eight into a second duplex lot. So it's actually four lots becoming two lots. So all I need is a motion from the board, is for the chair to sign the lot line merger.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay. Dana's fast. Motion by Dana.
She's pretty fast.
Motion by Dana, second by Rick, for the lot line merger. Any discussion? Sign none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Chair votes affirmative, and the chair will sign the lot line adjustment. I don't know if I've got the right line here. Okay, next item we have is Elliott, London Dairy Phases Four and Five approval extension.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Ken Rhodes, on behalf of the applicant Elliott Health System, has submitted a letter requesting an extension. And the letter reads, "On behalf of the Elliott Health System, this correspondence presented by the applicant team to request an additional year extension to the end of 2012. The planning board's approval granted on April 1st, 2009, are currently extended on December 8th, 2010, to the end of 2011 for the medical office building project located across Buttrick Road from the recently fully completed care center. Basis of this request is very practical matter of timing and commitment of medical tenants, which have not yet fully materialized. Elliott Damon Farber is delighted to be a part of London Dairy community, and thanks to the board for its continued support and attention." So they're looking to have their approval extended to the end of next year. As with regard to any changes that have been made to the ordinances or the zoning in that area, there has been none.
Okay. So it'll be to the end of-
12.
2012. December 2012.
Yeah, or basically a year from the current.
Year, okay. Okay, I have a motion by Mary.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question.
Yes.
Is this the lot across, where the trees are clear cut?
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, it's just to the south of Buttrick Road, where the current Dana-
And just so everybody knows, Phase One to Three was the facility that is now there. Phase One was the outpatient care facility, and then Phases Two and Three was the Dana Farber, and then the regional medical facility. Four and Five are the 60,000 square feet approved across the street.
Thank you.
Okay, so motion by Mary, second by Dana. Any discussion or further discussion? Sign none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Abstentions, chair votes affirmative, and the extension to Elliott Health System's been extended to the end of December of 2012. Okay, next we have is approval signing in minutes of August 3rd and 10th. I'll take those separately, in case someone was not at a meeting and wants to abstain.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of August 3rd?
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by Lynn. Any discussion? Sign none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Abstentions? And chair votes affirmative.
I wasn't here on the 10th, so I'm not going to make the motion to accept them.
I wasn't either.
Okay.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
They'll make the motion.
That we accept the minutes from the August 10th, 2011 planning board meeting?
Okay, second by Rick. Any discussion by the board? Sign none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Abstentions?
Abstain.
Letha, Mary, and Dana were abstaining, they're not present. And chair votes affirmative, and motion carries, so the minutes can be signed by the secretary. Get the stickies.
Yep.
Let me see if I can. Okay, minutes are accepted. Okay, discussion with the town staff?
I see them.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're all set, okay.
All set.
Go to Andre. I know there's several things that we have.
(laughing) Sorry about that, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I have three items on there. The first of which is, I have David Priest and Jack Munn here from Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission, just to give the board a quick overview as to a possible sustainable community initiative grant that is a collaboration of several communities in Southern New Hampshire. And I took them up for their offer, that they would come in and give the board an overview to see if that's something that the board wants to participate in. That's all.
Okay. You have the floor.
Thank you very much for giving us some time to go over this exciting grant proposal. HUD, the Housing and Urban Development Department of the federal government, is offering what they call a community challenge grant. And going over this grant application is very challenging, to try to implement something that is on a regional basis, that would meet the six principles of sustainability. Jack Munn is here to kind of walk you through the proposed grant program, and we're here to answer any questions that you may have regarding the grant. Jack?
Thank you, Tom. We don't want to take up too much of your time tonight, but we appreciate the opportunity to talk briefly about this project. As David mentioned, this is the HUD Sustainability Communities Regional Grant Program, and this is the second year of the grant.
Mr. Chairman, can you just ask that?
Oh, hey, Jack?
Yes?
Could you pull the microphone up there, on the edge there?
Okay.
Just put it right up on that ledge.
You can put it right on the edge there.
Yeah, right up like that.
Okay, great.
Catch up to sound. That's so people who are watching can hear us.
Okay, excellent. So this year, they're redoing the grant again, for fiscal year 2011, and I just wanted to give you these order-of-magnitude dollar amounts, because they're quite impressive. $70 million is going to be available all across the country for the regional planning grants that David talked about, and then $30 million will be available for the community challenge grants. And the community challenge grant is what we would like to talk to you about this evening. And the regional planning grant really involves all the regional planning commissions in the state of New Hampshire, and they're going to submit one application to HUD to basically coordinate and cooperate with the state agencies and all 250-some-form municipalities in the state of New Hampshire, to develop local sustainability plans for those municipalities.
As well as a statewide sustainable development plan.
Okay. So that is a separate region grant that the state and the regional planning commissions are all working together on. And this would be something that you could benefit from in your master plan update process, if the timing of the grant is awarded and it falls within the same time that you do your master plan. Now, the community challenge grant is what we are seeking your participation for tonight. This is going to be a more of a multi-jurisdictional approach. As Andre mentioned, there'll be several communities. Actually, if London Dairy participates, you will be the sixth community that will be involved. We have the National Regional Planning Commission, Hillsborough County, the city of Manchester. We just were at the Bedford Planning Board meeting about an hour ago, and they approved the project, participating in the project. The town of Gostown, the towns of Lynchfield and Merrimack, and that leaves you guys to make your final decision. The other partners are New Hampshire DOT, the Manchester-Boston Regional Airport, the Transit Authority, the Chamber of Congress, the Gostown Industrial Corporation, which actually provided some hard cash towards the project, Agonos Development Companies, and Neighbor Works. These are all the cooperating partners that will be participating in the development of the project. This is a three-year project, so the grant's awarded for three years, and as David mentioned, it's a very challenging grant. HUD has all kinds of requirements for grants, as you may be familiar with community development block grants. So in laying the work plan out for this grant, we have to identify how we're going to create deliverable products each year. And in year one, what we would like to do is develop a sustainability plan for what we're calling the Metro Center Growth Corridor. And I'll show you exactly where that's located in a couple of minutes. And what we'd like to do, the overall goal of the plan, would be to improve the economic competitiveness of this area, and improve transportation access and connectivity and overall quality of life. Those are big, broad goals, but there are specific products that can be done to help do that. Also, we'd like to get a shared vision of all the municipalities, as to how they view this corridor, the future growth and development of the corridor, and most importantly, begin to raise public awareness and education as to what sustainability means. A lot of people don't really know what sustainable development is. And so one of the components of this process is we will bring on board a social marketing company consultant, who will actually do all kinds of great outreach in the communities on talking about sustainable growth and development. And these are the things that we'd like to see come out of it, more mixed use, compact growth, affordable housing, and most importantly, the reuse and redevelopment of buildings and structures that are currently underutilized, or properties that are vacant. Now, this plan is going to be very competitively challenged, because it's going to be a nationwide competition. But what we're trying to do is come up with an approach to developing the plan that HUD might see as being of value. And because the corridor, which I'll show you in a little bit, contains, oh, seven or eight key transportation facilities, and these facilities I've kind of highlighted here in different boxes, because we've grouped them into two different focus areas. But the planning process that we'd like to initiate will be centered on what's called corridor planning. And corridor planning comes up with guidelines for streetscape improvements, for safety improvements, for looking at a transportation corridor and seeing what could be done to help enhance it for greater mixed use, for energy efficiency, for basically greater overall attractiveness to bringing development into that area. So for the town of London Dairy, this particular box of facilities is very important, because it contains New Hampshire Route 3, 3A, the EF Everett Turnpike, US 3, the new airport access road, and the proposed Pennegill Road extension, as well as Brown Avenue. All of those roads are, have a regional context to London Dairy, and helping to enhance the connectivity and economic competitiveness of this whole area. This other box of facilities really is located more to the east and to the north, includes mainly Bedford and Gostown areas. But these facilities also extend down below London Dairy, down into Merrimack and Lynchfield, and that's why we've involved the National Regional Planning Commission and those communities. So I think what I'll do, before I get involved into what the actual objectives will be with the plan, is to kind of show you the location of the planning area. David, can you help hold this up? So, yeah, this is going to be a little challenging here. There we go. So what we have is, basically, thank you, John, is we have the city of Manchester, which is here, and this area, which is in yellow, is the study area, and we've called this the Metro Center Growth Corridor. It feeds off the whole Metro Center Regional Economic Development Partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, but it looks at this entire area, with London Dairy being down here south of the airport, and Gostown up here to the Hillsborough County complex. The Hillsborough County has 495 acres of undeveloped land that they would like to develop, but the zoning prevents them from doing that in Gostown. So having that connected down through here to the airport access road and back to the airport is a major regional need for basically expanding the growth of this whole area. As you know, Manchester has highway, very developed highway access and kind of a bypass around the south with 293, going around over to 101, and then connecting back up to around the northern-eastern side of Manchester. But there really is nothing in this location that provides kind of the full limited access highway that would help promote and move people and goods. There is the 114 corridor, which is limited access highway, and that then runs down into 101, and then 101 feeds into the EF Everett Turnpike and the 293 and Route 3, US Route 3 to the south. So having a vision for those transportation facilities is critical for the economic future growth and development of the region, and that's why we're trying to pursue this as a multi-jurisdictional project. The other aspect is, because it involves so many communities, we need to encourage that the communities realize that this is really driven by the communities. There's not really a top-down approach. The planning commission is not going to come in here and say, this is what each community needs to do. When I say the visioning process, the visioning process will enable people in London Dairy, all the boards and commissions in London Dairy, to participate and offer their opinions and their viewpoints about how they'd like to see these highways grow and develop in the future. And that's really the essence of the visioning process. So we see it complementing your current zoning and your current master planning update process, not conflicting with it. We will use whatever comes out of those processes and incorporate them into this overall regional planning process. The main thing, the difference that I'd like to point out, and the benefits that will directly apply to London Dairy, is the corridor planning process itself. Coming up with guidelines for the corridors, infrastructure improvements, safety improvements, and most importantly, looking at energy efficiency improvements. I mentioned to the Bedford Planning Board that street lighting is a very costly part of these highways, and we can have consultants come in and look at the lighting and say, what can be changed to make the lighting more energy efficient and more, less costly to the DOT, as well as to the municipalities. So that's just one thing that this process could lead into. And if there's any questions about the study area itself, in terms of London Dairy, it includes the northern portion of the northwest planning process that we did with you, London Dairy's high-growth area, the 1,000 acres that are located south of the airport, and then it also includes just the northern portion of Pennegill Road, well, Pennegill Road would be extended, hopefully, in the future. So we see this as kind of a regional planning process, a plan that would help support getting funding in the future for Pennegill Road, as well as helping lay out some coordinated planning for infrastructure development in the area. So I think those are the two big benefits for the town of London Dairy. David, you want to ask something else?
Also, the third year, the second and the third year will be spent in working with the towns on coming up with an innovative zoning initiative, like an overlay zone, or an overlay zoning district, that communities have the option to adopt, which would give an incentive for developers to develop the vision that we have all come up with. So if we come up with a mixed-use, transportation-oriented development, this, hopefully, this overlay district would provide the incentives that would make it advantageous for developers to actually come in and develop those parcels as such. But again, we're working, you know, bottoms up, and utilizing the towns and the town planners in all of the steps in the process.
So what would actually be required of London Dairy for this? It's just-
Basically, what we're asking for, it's a three-year process, and we're asking for $6,000 in soft match, which would be $2,000 in Andre's and his staff's time for those three years. And attending the meetings, reviewing documents, helping us to facilitate meetings within the town of London Dairy, those kind of-
So just in-kind-
In-kind services.
So there's no appropriation required?
That's exactly right.
Correct, yes. And we did, we have received commitments from all the other participants on those-
Again, communities are going for the soft match, and that's fine, because to have a successful outreach, public outreach and engagement, will need the help of the town planners and the planning directors to reach out to the communities and the planning boards to get their ideas on this plan.
Questions, comments from the board?
Are you coming with your search for a new town planner?
Very well. Matter of fact, tomorrow, we're holding the interviews.
Wow.
It'll be at 48 applicants submit.
Wow. Glad you have some people to choose from, that's awesome.
Good selection.
Yeah.
Hope it's very beneficial for us.
Is this something that you can see having the time to do? If you don't have anybody to, if you haven't felt the position right away? I have 48 people, it's great.
Yep.
But there's going to be a process involved there and everything, is this something you can do?
Well, at first, and I shared my anxiety a little bit with David and Jack, was at first, I thought the timeframe was going to conflict with the master plan, given that we're going to be putting a lot of time and effort there, and obviously, we have several projects coming online, or are going to be coming online shortly. And I was a bit concerned with regard to the timeframe of those things compared with the grant, but if this is a three-year period, and the soft match is participating in meetings, as well as obviously bringing some of that information back here to solicit your input with regard to what's going on, I think that's, you know, I think, one, I think by October we'll have somebody in place, and, two, given the timeframe by which this is going to take place, I think we can, I think we can swing it.
Yeah. The other thing, these grants, we anticipate the grants will be decided this January, but we're not, we haven't heard back from HUD as to when they're going to make the awards. But we anticipate-
But if this is a three-year period and the soft match is participating in, you know, participating in meetings, as well as obviously bringing some of that information back here to solicit your input with regard to what's going on, I think that's, you know, I think one, I think by October we'll have somebody in place, and two, given the timeframe by which this is going to take place, I think we can swing it.
The other thing, these grants, we anticipate the grants will be decided this January, but we're not, we haven't heard back from HUD as to when they're going to make the awards.
So probably into next year before...
Oh, it'll be way in, next summer, when I think we'll finally start on the first step.
We're hopeful, but, you know, it's a very competitive grant. We don't know if we're going to be selected or not.
Well, it's an election year.
Yeah, it is.
It is, yes.
Who knows?
If you've got a couple of minutes, I just want to briefly touch on some of the things we want to look at with the plan. Providing more transportation choices, that's kind of one of the livability principles David mentioned. Transit, public transit, connecting and expanding transit services in this corridor is very important. Complete streets, if you don't know what complete streets are yet, you will probably in your upcoming master plan update. It's a very important new upcoming concept for promoting greater pedestrian bicycle-friendly environments and attracting mixed-use development. The other thing is promoting affordable housing. You know all about that. We have Neighbor Works involved, as well as Dick Aganoff. So one of the ideas is to look at opportunity areas for where affordable housing projects could be put into the corridor, particularly in mixed-use developments. Enhancing economic development, David mentioned the smart growth zoning overlay ideas. And the supporting communities, because sustainability development deals with trying to identify the greater efficiencies to improve the overall quality of life in communities, that is a big part of the whole planning process. And that's where the public level of awareness needs to be increased in the plan. And then integrating funding and infrastructure development is another key part of it, prioritizing that infrastructure and finding and targeting funds for it. And then lastly, a couple of other little things, protecting existing neighborhoods. That's a huge, huge consideration, as well as making those neighborhoods a little bit more healthier and safe and walkable. And then also, more importantly, which is what HUD would like to see, is reducing barriers. And by barriers, they mean impediments to zoning changes. Could be regulatory like that, or it could be physical barriers, such as actual improvements that prevent people from moving from one location to another. So we've included green building design as an element of the plan, as well as these energy-efficient transportation practices, looking at these corridors and trying to find improvements that would help lower costs for DOT and the towns. So with that, I think that's pretty much sums up where we're at. The grant technically was due, was originally due tomorrow.
But they've given us another week because of the Hurricane Irene.
Yeah, I think the congressional delegates got to HUD from Vermont, because I'm sure there's a lot of Vermont communities that will be applying.
Certain preoccupation.
So we had till next Friday.
Yeah, I guess, I'll start with Southern New Hampshire Planning first. How would the, if we got the grant, how would the funds be distributed across these towns that you speak of? Would they be spread across evenly? I mean, because I see Londonderry on the periphery, and I don't really, I still don't see how it necessarily benefit us.
The funds that we would receive from HUD would go to pay for the project. It wouldn't be dispersed among the communities.
No, but you're resulting projects that you then target, certain areas. I guess what I'm asking is, will Londonderry receive the same type of treatment in your plan as the other towns?
They will, if they come to the meetings and participate, they will be, you know, they're part of the process.
Yeah, we will have an advisory committee, and each municipality will have a voting representative on the advisory committee. And in addition, once the plan is completed, because DOT is involved and other state agencies, it will help influence the transportation improvement program process.
I have a few more questions, if you don't mind.
Oh, that's all right. Just keep going.
Andre, when they talked about in the beginning the transportation corridors and whatnot, does the lack of infrastructure that currently exists in that area affect our ability to expand that Pennegill Road area currently? What I'm saying is, if we didn't do this, would we be just fine? Or...
Well, yes and no. I should say, one, if the Pennegill Road project gets built and tied into the Airport Access Road, obviously, that Airport Access Road is a vital piece of that. What this does is goes beyond that. It goes beyond as to looking at the other infrastructure affected by, not only the Airport Access Road, but the corridors involved, from getting from point A, which could be Londonderry, to point B, it could be Gostown, and all the communities in between. And I think it's attempting to look at, putting a, giving a harder look at how transportation happens within this area and what can be improved in order to make it better. So if the transportation infrastructure is improved by a variety of ways, then it only helps Londonderry. I mean, if people have other options other than just using their car to get from point A to point B, there are other options, then yes, there's a benefit to Londonderry. And those are the very things, things that we're going to be looking at in our master plan anyways, but now we can look at it on a broader scale, a more regional scale.
One example would be Brown Avenue. As you come around the airport, you get off the new Airport Access Road, Brown Avenue is very heavily congested, as you know, and needs to be looked at for future improvements.
Some of, Andre, some of the board members have asked you and your staff if you have time for this. My question is, how passionate about this are you?
Let me tell you. Again, I shared my anxiety with Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission at first, but given the scope of that and given the timeframe of it, you know, I think the thing I'm most passionate about is that I hate putting in infrastructure, putting a lot of money in infrastructure, because roads are not inexpensive, they are expensive to put forth. And like, I use the Pennegill Road as an example, that's a $12.3 million project, both sewer and water, to put that in place. I like it to go beyond a 20-year timeframe. If there's other mechanisms, other ways for people to get from point A to point B other than the car, and extends the life of that infrastructure for maybe 30, 40 years, I'm all for it.
Thanks.
John?
Yeah, a couple of questions. On your map, the boundaries were determined by whom?
Well, basically, we sat down with the planning directors from the towns and tried to include as much areas around the corridors as possible, taking into account the people that live in the area and what facilities they use and where they travel most, their travel behavior. So we've included most of the area outside, but portions of the center of New Hampshire Mall in Manchester and the Brown Avenue corridor I mentioned, because that is very critical for travel behavior and highway connectivity in that area north of the airport. We followed up along the Merrimack River and then the Scotticlock River up to Gostown, and then back around the county lands, and then kind of an area of buffering along 114, which takes into account some areas that are zone industrial, that would like to be seen as future mixed-use development. And then through kind of the Bedford area down to where the traffic sheds are around the airport, new Airport Access Road. And because there was a traffic study dealing with the Airport Access Road and Pennegill Road extension that the Planning Commission did a couple of years ago, that involved Merrimack and Lynchfield, we included portions of those communities. So that's kind of how the study area was defined. But really, if you look at it on a bigger scale in relationship to the city of Manchester, you'll see that this is the area where there are the largest still undeveloped properties available, number one. And then number two, you'll see that there's a lot of disconnections in suburban residential neighborhoods that aren't connected, very limited connections between them. And number three, there's no public transit, very limited public transit.
Right.
So with those three kind of area problem considerations, we identified this as kind of being the future significant growth area for Manchester and these communities in the future. And I think most people would agree with that. Bedford Planning Board had certainly agreed with it this afternoon.
Right. With the opening of the Airport Access Road, it has provided the options for communities in that area to either react to development or to be proactive and to do the necessary planning to get the type of development they want in their communities. And with this Community Challenge Grant, if we're successful in getting it, we'll be on, the latter will be proactive, we'll be planning for the type of development that we want to see in these transportation corridors. And I think that's very important for the town of Londonderry, for these communities, and for the region as a whole.
Next question, so Andre, you participated in this map?
Yeah, we participated in what Jack alluded to before with regard to the transportation plan that was put together, Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission. And then we had some discussion on, you know, on that particular plan.
Okay. And I just have two more questions. Next question would be, was this an answer in seek of a question? Meaning, when I look at Bedford and other outlying areas, and you talk about mass transportation, public transportation, and so forth, those areas really aren't conducive to that type of transportation. So are you going to these folks and saying, hey, listen, we have some monies, we can provide this for you? And they turn it into a nice-to-have? Or is it something that they've been looking for and they just cannot provide?
It'd probably be both, in the fact that maybe the population base doesn't really support the transit service now. But it will in the future. Population is going to continue to increase. Development is going to continue to increase. And the question is, will we be able to build those roads and highways like we have 30 years ago? And the question is, no, we will not be able to do that. So we need to come up with other transportational systems, multimodal transportations, to move people and to move, you know, freight around within this area. And this study would allow us to do that. We'll look, we'll be able to enable us to look at other transportation systems and how we can best move people and materials around within this subregion.
Okay, my last question, does this include commuter rail service and freight rail service?
We are, yes, the New Hampshire Capitol Corridor is, will be noted in this corridor plan, and it does play a very significant part in it.
Yeah, I forgot to mention, the passenger rail station is a facility that would be identified.
So that would continue through Nashua? Because I believe they've been looking at that as well?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any more questions or comments from the board?
Yes, I have a question. It said that in year three, it would be implemented.
Yeah.
That's a plan, though. It is not the actual infrastructure built and the rail laid and the trains showing up and everything.
What we hope to do in year three is get these partnerships put together between developers and communities, so that you could see mixed-use developing within these areas. And that you have the zoning put in place to encourage the mixed-use, to promote it, look for incentives, actually have some projects kind of conceptually identified and potentially pursued in year three. That's the goal.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? I guess what we need to do is, I mean, if the board is favorable to participate in this, would be a motion for the, you know, town to participate in the sustainable communities initiative grant.
And I'll, as a matter of fact, you want a letter of recommendation?
That's correct.
So moved, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
I have a motion by Dana, second by Rick. Need discussion by the board. Seeing that, all those are papers signed by by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Abstentions, she has affirmative, and motion carries. So Londonderry is a participant, and...
I thank you very much.
Be looking forward to the meetings, I guess, probably this time next year.
I hope so.
David?
Thank you very much.
The letter of recommendation, it can come from me, or do you want the chairman?
It would be better coming from Art.
From Art, okay. So we'll put that together, and I'll make sure you get it checked.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next item we have is a slow administrative boardwork staff discussion. Proposed retail motor fuel outlet Brown Ave. at Pennegill Road in Manchester. And notice there's a letter in here.
Yes.
I know we had some questions about that when the...
Yes. Mr. Chairman, back on July 20, actually, July 13th, we had a planning board meeting, which the Manchester Planning Department has sent a letter over to us for our input regarding to a gas station convenience store located on the corner of Brown Ave. and the new Pennegill Road extension leading down to Brown Ave. On that corner, there is a proposed gas station convenience store, and the, some of the concerns that the board voiced at that meeting was, the board expressed a concern that the dual-access driveway off of the proposed Pennegill Road connection to 3A where people would make a left turn across a multi-lane highway was a concern, and recommend that the city of Manchester consult with the Department of Transportation regarding the curb cut onto the new access road. Well, the letter that we received from Greenman and Petersen, Inc., indicated they had done so. They had met with, obviously have gone back to the city of Manchester, and had also met with the Department of Transportation with regard to our concerns, as well as concerns by Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission and others. And the outcome of that was that they agreed to move the driveway 50 feet east on Pennegill Road, meaning that it would move 50 feet towards Londonderry. That would enable a better queue length going down to Brown Ave. to facilitate traffic back and forth, so we wouldn't have a backup of traffic. And also, coinciding with that, with the left turns, left turns going into the site, by moving up east 50 feet enabled the, more of a fluid motion going down to, or turning movement as they go onto 3A, so it wouldn't have that backup. And also, they also rely on the fact that there is a significant 10-foot breakdown lane in that area, meaning that if there are left turns going into the site, they will be able to bypass that through the breakdown lane and continue towards the intersection with the Airport Access Road. And on the other side would be Pennegill Road intersection. So evidently, DOT blessed the plan, provided that they moved the driveway east, and I believe they have done so.
Yeah, I think they probably have approved it, because, I mean, turning traffic across, oncoming traffic's not always the safest.
It is not, yeah.
In essence, DOT had the same concerns that we did, and the applicant had addressed the life shifts in that driveway to the east.
Correct.
So that's what the outcome is, basically.
John, can you get your mic back? Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Okay.
So that was more of an update that the letter had been sent, and the response was, was, I think the outcome was what I think the board was looking for, just for a safer movement there with regard to the entrance and exit out of that proposal.
Okay, thanks. Okay, next, last one here. 124 to 126 Rockingham Road, traffic impact fees. And that was from last month's site plan. Wasn't that a lot consolidation?
Correct. If the, it's the chairman, if the board remembers, last month, the planning board conditionally approved a gas station convenience store on the corner of Liberty Drive Extension and Route 28. And one of the conditions of approval, obviously, were the payment of impact fees. And looking at the impact fees, and the initial calculation that was done on the impact fee was done on a per-trip basis, which we have as part of our Route 28 Eastern Segment Corridor Plan of a... Segment Corridor Plan of a five-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars. And based on the applicant's traffic plan, they were going to produce sixty-four new P and P car trips. So do the math, it comes out to thirty-three thousand four hundred and eight dollars. Obviously, the, there was some concern by the applicant with regard to the impact fee. So I just told them I would take a look at it and make sure that the, you know, that the calculation on that and all the aspects of looking at a traffic impact fee in accordance with our methodology was accurate. And what I found was that it was not, the, that the, the way that was calculated was flawed. The way this, the way our traffic impact fee works is that it works on a, on two ways. One, the Southern Hands of Planning, and this is based on the nineteen-ninety-seven plan that we still are utilizing, and I'll get to that later on. But they, there's two ways they looked at it. They looked at it per development areas. There were twenty-eight identified development areas within this corridor. And basically, what's taken a look at in those development areas, what those development areas are going to produce for trips, what's the potential highest and best use for those, for those areas, and how are those trips allocated throughout this corridor. And based on that, there's a methodology by which each one of those trips are allocated along those corridor, and a, and a, and a impact fee is determined based on the private sector's share of that, of the improvements. The, and the improvements that were identified in the Route twenty-eight plan were broken into two categories there. There's roadway segment, meaning that the actual roadway in between certain areas, certain intersections, and then there's intersection improvements. The roadway segment areas are along Route twenty-eight, and this is Route twenty-eight, Exit Five, east, on the east side of I- ninety-three, going from, basically Auburn Road all the way to the Dairy Town Line. And the roadway segments that were looked to be improved, and the improvements were to make it, to go from a two-lane in either direction highway to a four-lane in either direction highway. And that was the improvement, the roadway improvement. And that was from Auburn Road to Liberty Drive Extension, from Liberty Drive Extension to Stonehenge, from Stonehenge to Seasons Lane, and to Seasons Lane to the Dairy Town Line. And the intersection improvements along those way were Route twenty-eight and Auburn Road, twenty-eight and Liberty, twenty-eight and Stonehenge, twenty-eight and Seasons Lane, as well as going up Auburn Road to Auburn Road and Wilson Drive, and Auburn Road and Old Dairy Road, were all the intersections that were analyzed at the time. Since that time, obviously, we all know that the DOT is moving forward with the I- ninety-three widening, specifically addressing the red-listed bridges, which Exit Five is one of those red-listed bridges. They're going to be making improvements along I- ninety, I mean, along Route twenty-eight. The improvements that we have identified in our, or some of the improvements that we have identified in our traffic plan are being done by DOT now. Therefore, there's no sense in collecting an impact fee for a project that is now being undertaken by DOT. Therefore, when I relooked at the, the traffic impact fee for this particular development, it is identified as Development Area Five in our, in our plan, Development Area Five based on the trips that the, the trips that the applicant had identified in this traffic study and their impact on a now-modified area. Because again, the roadway segment of Auburn Road to Liberty Drive and from Liberty Drive partially to Stonehenge Road is being accomplished by, is being done by DOT. The intersection improvement of Auburn Road and Liberty Drive Extension are being done by DOT. Therefore, those particular projects should be taken off. But the traffic impact, the traffic study will have an impact on the Route twenty-eight Stonehenge intersection, Seasons Lane intersection, Auburn Road and Wilson Drive intersection, and the Auburn Road, Old Dairy Road intersection. Therefore, based on the recalculation of those impacts on those intersections, the impact fee goes from thirty-three four eight to nine thousand nine nineteen. And therefore, it's our recommendation, staff's recommendation, that the impact fee be reduced to such for that particular development. And we all, I also recommend that the, that the Northeast London Dairy Subarea Study, which is, which is the, what the study is called, be amended to reflect the significant changes currently being undertaken by the DOT. And they, and we amend the cost allocation accordingly on the interim basis until such time that the planning board can do a comprehensive update for that corridor. Right now, obviously, we just don't have the funding to do a comprehensive update. But we can reduce the scope of that particular impact fee based on the work not being accomplished by DOT. And as far as the roadway segment, that's another area that I would strongly recommend that we not, not have an impact fee system for a state roadway segment. I do recommend that we keep the intersection, even though the intersection that we have, the Stonehenge intersects a state highway. The fact that the state highway, it leads to our roadway, I think it ought to stay in there. I think the impact fee is vital to making sure that people can allocate, enter and exit our roadway system safely. So I recommend that we do keep those, but I do recommend that we remove the state roadway segment. As new development comes in, and DOT, and it has an impact on DOT's highway, Route twenty-eight, Route one oh two, whatever that may be, they're always at the table with us anyways with regard to scoping a traffic study. And any resulting impact that that study will, or the particular development will have on their roadway, then the state will say, well, you need to do this, you need to do X, Y, or Z. Then that's the state's recommendation for how, how that particular project impacts their infrastructure.
So that's the state's responsibility?
Correct. Yeah, I want to leave it, of those roadway segments, I want to leave to the state. Those intersection improvements that coincide with town roads, I want to leave in there because at some point in time, much like the Page Road, Route twenty-eight intersection, we had used some impact fees that had been collected towards that improvement, but as a failed intersection and effective Page Road, our roadway.
Okay. So besides this, we, at some point in the future, need to update our
Correct.
Impact fee plan for
Correct. And on the interim basis, what I'm looking for, for the board, is to obviously support the recommendation, so I can go to the town council, because there will be a change in impact fee to make, make those interim changes until such time we can do a more comprehensive change.
Yeah, that's it. Bottom line is the town council approves that. Deals with money. Any questions for the board?
Yeah, can the impact fees only be applied to the eastern side of ninety-three, on Route twenty-eight on the eastern side of ninety-three?
Yes. Yeah, because that's the study area. Yeah, that's the study area. So we just, we just updated the western segment from I- ninety-three to the Manchester Town Line. And that's the project that Tim and I worked on with regard to improving that. But on the, on this side, it's a different segment area, therefore, it can only apply for that segment.
Because I look at Noise Road and twenty-eight as being an intersection that could use some help, right? And that's closer than Seasons Lane is, I think, you know, to that development, but it's on the other side of the highway.
Correct. And I believe that's identi, that's one of the identified intersections within that western segment plan, so.
Okay. Any, anything else?
My questions for Tom and Andre. Is there any reason why the town council wouldn't, wouldn't approve that? The change in, yeah.
I think not, no. I think really we should be collecting something that doesn't have an impact on you know.
That's my, that's the whole rationale, is I just want to take money
I can't speak for all this, but it doesn't seem right to do that, you know.
Okay, thank you.
I think, I think Andre, correct me if I'm wrong, because again, if Andre collects that thirty-three thousand dollars and they, we don't do anything with that for seven years?
Six years.
Six years. It goes back to them anyways. So
Yep. Tell us the six-year period in which to utilize that impact fees.
Okay.
John?
Yeah, quick question. I'm looking at the map, and I'm looking specifically at L thirteen and L, excuse me, L one thirteen and L one twelve. Let's say if something similar happened where there was a merger of the properties and someone wanted to put a, a something in there of a business. What type of impact fees would they now pay based on what you just told us?
Can you say that one more time?
So, so I'm doing a hypothetical here, looking at a future, a future scenario where L one thirteen and L one twelve, they merge up and we put
Yeah.
I don't know, we put something there? Or someone wants to put something there?
Yeah, they say another gas station convenience store goes in there.
Okay, fine. So, so we have that going on.
Yeah.
How would you now assess those impact fees based on what you just told us?
It would be based, basically the same way. It would be, the same way I'm proposing, is that we're going to look at, one, their traffic study and way those trips are distributed through the corridor. And then if, and I believe this is a studied area, I think this is Development Area Six, I believe, in our corridor plan. We'll look how those trips impact the corridor, and then assess the fee based on, on that impact.
Okay, so what, what I'm getting to is, I don't want to see us, you know, fudge the, I'm honestly not using the word fudge, you know, change, change the way we calculate the fee for this particular parcel, and then we go, we go down in the same area and the fees are drastically different later on, because there's, there's no work going on. You know, the DOT's done, and now we're dealing with that, that lot.
No, and that's the reason why I'm, before you, I have this before you now, so this change will take place from here on out, meaning that if this is a development area, identified development area, it will be, the impact fee will be assessed the same way that the applicant on the corner of Liberty Drive. If they're outside the study area, then I'll use the outside, the, the per-trip cost of five twenty-two per trip until such time that we do a comprehensive update. So, thank you. There'll be, like project will be, we treat it likewise.
What timeframe are you looking forward to update this plan, impact fee plan?
That depends on when I get funding.
Oh, okay. Budget season's coming up. Okay, so what I need is a motion that in essence agrees with Andre's letter to the board.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Lynn, second by Dana. A further discussion on it. Sign that. All those who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Abstentions, she has affirmative. And motion carries. Anything else, Andre?
Other than the Master Plan Subcommittee met on August eighteenth, I believe, August eighteenth, and we looked at the RFP a little bit closer, and we made some modifications to it, just clarify some language. That will go back to the full committee on our meeting later on this month, as well as a draft of the, the survey, at least some proposed language that we want to use for the survey.
Anything else? That's all I have. Okay. Rick?
CIP Committee met, and we'll be seeing that in the future.
That'll be next week?
I think there's a workshop next week.
Yeah, workshop on CIP next week. Anything else? We'll go to our feature for the evening here, and that is new plans for Call of Cooperation, Tax Map eighteen, lots thirteen dash ninety-seven and thirteen dash ninety-nine. This is an application acceptance in a public hearing for a seventeen-lot subdivision subdivision located on Hunter Mill Road and Manthor Mill Road, with a previously approved Mill Pond subdivision. And what the board has to do first is accept the plan as complete. Once the plan is accepted as complete, we can start our public hearing. And also, it gives us a sixty-five-day timeframe, which to render a decision on this plan. Andre?
Mr. Chairman, there are no outstanding checklist items. Staff recommends that the applicant, applicant, application be accepted as complete.
Mr. Chairman, seeing there are no outstanding checklist items, make a motion to accept the plan as complete.
Second.
Motion by Dana, second by Rick. Any discussion by the board? Sign that. All those who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Abstentions, she has affirmative. And we'll proceed with the public hearing. And just identify yourself for our records, please.
My name is Brian Pratt, with CLD Consulting Engineers. And thank you very much. Good evening. What we're here to present to you is a seventeen-lot subdivision, sixteen of which are proposed for building lots. One is going to be an open space lot. The subject parcel is located on Manthor Mill Road and Hunter Mill Way, and they're both off of Old Dairy Road.
Okay.
It's right near the Manchester Town Line. The subdivision is located within a previously approved subdivision called Mill Pond. It was a ninety-eight-lot subdivision. It was approved in nineteen ninety-eight. And as part of that original subdivision, an area was reserved for what was called a future planned residential development. So on the approved plans, it did say that this area was reserved for sixteen future building lots. The reason it wasn't incorporated into part of the original development is because of the growth management ordinance. It was kind of added in after the fact, and for, to keep everything moving on pace and to not lose the grandfather status, they just showed the areas to be, to be subdivided in a future plan set. So that's what we're here to do now, is to basically finish that sixteen-lot subdivision. So of the original ninety-eight lots, fourteen have been, fourteen have been completed. A good portion of the roadways, about, about half of the roadways within the development have been at least partially completed. The, the roadways through where these proposed sixteen lots are highlighted in green on the plan behind me. Basically, that was the area that was highlighted as future planned residential development. Since then, the zoning ordinance has changed slightly, but it's, it's still generally the same. It's now called the Conservation Subdivision. So this, this subdivision does meet the current zoning for density calculations, opens, minimum open space requirements, frontage, lot size, et cetera. Most of the utilities through the area are substantially complete. The sewer's been constructed, the water's been constructed. One of the roadways has, has been paved, the other one is to subgrade. So there's some construction associated with the original approval to get these roads completed, but they're, they're in pretty good shape. The stormwater infrastructure, most of it's in place. Some of the detention ponds have been completed. One of them has been partially completed. So there's a little bit of additional stormwater work remaining, but it's pretty well on. So as part of this plan set, we included improvement plans, which show potential grading scenarios for the different parcels. We included site distance profiles for, for each of the lots and the potential future, the future right-of-way. We included a revised phasing plan for the entire development. As far as permits, all the wetlands impacts were completed as part of the original development. So all the, so the wetlands permit is, is no longer necessary. We have an active alteration of terrain permit, which was renewed in two thousand nine. And the sewer infrastructure through our proposed portion, the six, proposed sixteen lots has been completed. So the only, the only state permit we need is the alteration of terrain, which is currently active. We have obtained utility clearance letters for all the utilities. And we've worked closely with DPW and planning through the design review process, and we've addressed most of their comments. Couple of remaining, which, in this letter that I just received today, I don't have any issues with their remaining comments. We do have two waiver requests. The first one was for the plan scales. The subdivision regulations require a maximum scale of a hundred, one inch equals a hundred feet for boundary plans. If we were to do everything at a hundred scale, we'd end up having a hundred-page plan set, just like the original approval, because technically, this is a subdivision of the entire hundred-acre parcel. So we, we have to show the entire parcel. So we, we changed that to two hundred scale, so we could fit on a manageable number of sheets, so it's easier to, you know, follow through the plan set. And the, for the subdivision plans, we required forty scale. We request to be waived to allow a fifty scale. Again, that's, that's so we can fit the proposed sixteen lots on two sheets instead of on four sheets, so. And the second waiver that we request is in regards to the Conservation District monumentation. Regulation requires that the wetlands buffer be monumented with signs. We don't have a problem with doing that in the, the area of the new sixteen lots, but technically, according to the regulation, we would have to monument the entire hundred-plus acres. And so we're just asking for a waiver, so that we only monument, they're shown on the screen on the right-hand side.
Right here, these circles are the monuments they put on there as it impacts the subdivided lots.
And I think I covered pretty much everything. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, we'll go to staff and the board, and then we'll go to the public after that. So, John?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'll go through the waiver request first. The applicant is requesting a waiver to section 4.01(c). Applicant has not provided planes at 1 inch equals 40 scale as required by the regs. Applicant subdivision plans that are at a scale of 1 inch equals 200 and 1 inch equals 50 feet, where 1 inch equals 100 and 1 inch equals 40 are required per the regulations. Staff recommends granting the waiver as to be consistent with the previously approved phases of Mill Pond and as per the applicant's request letter. Second waiver that he's requesting is to section 3.02(c), which requires that the CO district monumentation, yeah, regarded, as it relates to the monumentation of the markers. The applicant states that full compliance with the section would require to monumentation of the entire 100-acre open space parcel. Staff again recommends granting of the waiver. The CO district boundary impacted by the single-family lots will be properly monumented and as requested in the applicant's waiver request letter. Item three, the updated DES alteration of terrain permit recently obtained for the project requires that additional drainage features be provided and constructed with the proposed drainage improvements plan previously provided separately with the latest submission. However, it's unclear when the proposed additional drainage features will be constructed. Since they were not part of the original project, we recommend the applicant incorporate the drainage improvement plans into the plan set and provide notes to address the proposed improvements acceptable to the Department of Public Works. Item four, recommending the applicant provide the owner's signature on all applicable plans, and also to update the planning board's signature blocks to address the project phase consistent with the regs. Lastly, we recommend the applicant incorporate the separately submitted post-development calculations, diagrams, and plans with the previously submitted drainage report information into a single bound drainage report, consistent with the previous drainage report submission, to be in compliance with the regulations and also to be placed in the planning divisions' files. So there are, again, just two board action items, those being the two waiver requests that staff supports. That's all we have.
Okay, thanks, John. Anything, Andre?
The only additional comment I would have is one of the subsequent conditions is the payment of the offsite improvement fees, traffic, police, fire. The traffic, under the previously approved Mill Pond, there is agreement for the 100, I guess the original 103 lots that were approved, that there would be a $1,000 per house traffic impact fee paid, and I guess that would need to be honored, I guess, because of, for the first 103 lots. And, but obviously the school impact fee, the fire and police will still be as it is, but the traffic would be, would be that amount as condition
That's from the previous, the current plan.
Approval, correct. But other than that, I have no other.
Okay. Let's start from the other end here, John.
Not at this time.
Okay.
No, I'm all set. No questions. I know you said something right at the very beginning that, about the 17th lot. What was the 17th lot?
Just by the geometry of the area that was outlined in the original approval, it ended up leaving a small parcel that was bound by one of the right-of-ways, so it's just a small open space parcel. It's right on the lower left, right where he's highlighting. Basically, that's, it's just an open space parcel. I left that there so there's connectivity between the two roadways.
So is it just going to be, I mean paved, is it just going to be grass and, you know, people can just use it?
Yep.
As a dog park? Kidding?
Yeah, it's going to just be part of the open space, so however the rest of the open space is used.
Thank you.
We're all set.
Nothing right now.
I'm all set.
Okay.
Tom?
I have no questions.
You're all set. Any butters or members of the public have any questions, comments, or concerns? Yes, sir.
Yeah, Van, could you come down to the microphone? You can sit right next to the engineer there. He won't hurt you.
I'm just trying to put everything in perspective here. Where on the map, does the cul-de-sac on Hunter Mill, is that the upper road that's going to limit the cul-de-sac and bring that in?
So where are you on this plan?
If you can hold on a minute, Vern, we can show you where you reside. Vern, this is, this is, bear with me for a minute. This is Hunter Mill right here.
Yeah.
This is Manter Mill.
Manter Mill, right at the bridge.
I believe you live right over here, don't you?
Yeah. Jerry Lane and Old Dairy.
Correct. So this is Manter Mill.
Then the bridge goes over the Brook, right here?
Right.
With the bar gate.
Mm-hmm.
So people can go across that. So where he's talking about is the development in this shaded area here.
But
See this shaded area?
So that won't be near the dam or the Brook? Go ask Brook.
It's beyond the Brook, Vern.
This is the Brook up there.
One concern, I'm just wondering about, they have a lot of construction trucks in the upper part of that lot, go from Brook Hollow across. Is that going to affect this housing at all? Because Manter Mill is a paved part of it, right? It's already paved.
Yes, yes.
And then Hunter Mill is the one that's got the sewer and everything else set up.
Yep.
The other one is your construction road. How's that going to affect everything?
Vern, we wouldn't allow them to run the, again, the Brook Hollow gravel removal operation. All that activity is going to come out of Auburn Road, where it presently does.
So there's no trucks going back up through that, they have been?
We do not want that to occur.
That's not, personal reasons or historical, right at the bridge where the gate is, Manter Mill?
Yep.
That's the old Manter Mill. That's the historical section. And there's a dam, was a dam there and everything else. I'd just like to be assured that any construction, it's not going to destroy that part of it. Because at one time when we were discussing this whole original setup, Mr. Lamontang says he, I think he talked to Tishy Hill, would create a little park there to protect that little area. I'm just wondering if that's still part of this or has to be the whole 103 parcel affected?
I'm not familiar myself with that, you know.
Right, when the first phase Yeah, this back 1999.
And Bob Lamontang's here, maybe he can address the concern.
Originally, completely different plan, but the Corps of Engineers says no, you can't, the road there is wetland, so they had to change everything around and put Hunter Mill in. But this whole area is going to be right from the Hunter Mill at the cul-de-sac, right across that barrier and take that Manter Mill and Hunter Mill and together.
Yep.
It's more
Yeah, the 16 lots, both, some of them front on Manter Mill, some of them front on Hunter Mill, and they'll be connected through. So this is Hunter Mill, they'll actually be connected up through here. So the first phase of development will likely
Well, that's already blacked out.
Yep, up to, yeah, up to about here is all paved, so this will connect through and connect that loop in this cul-de-sac to go away.
They'll have complete access from Manter Mill or
Yep.
They can bring them down and they can go either way.
Yep.
Okay, that answers my questions.
Okay, so we just need clarification on the dam area. That's going to be protected, preserved, because it might be on the old plan. Oh, Bob Lamontang is here. Maybe, maybe come to the microphone right over here, Bob, and then you can probably, you know, clarify this for us. Or you can just stand, you're within sound range of it.
Nothing, nothing's changing on the dam. That's staying as the original plan.
But you were going to put a little park, just protect it.
Right, and a sign that just said that's the original old mill site. Right. That's, nothing's changing with this subdivision.
Okay, so that's, that'll maybe be protected then?
Right.
So you're still putting the little park that he's talking about there?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm satisfied, thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Anyone else? Okay, so anyone else, I'll bring it back to the board. We've got two waivers to do, and then to the
The little park that he described, who's going to, who's going to own it?
homeowners association owns the open space.
And is there going to be any restriction on it so that it isn't paved over after this approval or something is done to it?
We'd have to look at the covenants to ensure that, you know, that it identifies that it's to remain as is.
Okay.
I'm not intimately familiar with Tom with the, with those covenants, so.
Well, I guess, maybe we could put it another way, if there's not wording in there right now that would protect that park apart, can we add wording? I would be willing to add wording to protect that park apart.
Okay.
Yes.
Here, we can make that a condition, you know, of
However you want to do, whatever's easier for you to do, sure.
It's in a left lane anyway, so there's no way you're going to work.
Oh, okay.
The truck runs right through it. They built the mill right in the middle of the Brook. There's no way you're going to pave that way.
Okay.
I think, I think the covenants restrict the open space to like recreational uses anyway, so I don't think they would be able to do any type of construction
All right.
In the open space anyway.
Okay. Need a, first a motion for the granting of the two waivers.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to grant the two waivers that the applicant has requested referencing his letter of February 22, 2011, and the second, for the second waiver, June 6, 2011, and the letter to the planning board from town staff of September 7, 2011, grant the two requested waivers.
Second.
Okay, motion by Dana, second by Rick. Any discussion by the board? Sign that all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say nay. Absentions, chair is affirmative, and the two waivers have been granted. So we'll go right to the conditional approval. Need a motion?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to conditionally approve the plans for Brook Hollow Corporation Tax Map 18, lots 13-97 and 13-99, with the following conditions as outlined in the September 7, 2011, letter from, to the planning board, and all other terms and conditions.
Yeah, so precedent conditions, subsequent, and so forth, and then, yeah.
Second. With map 18.
I think it's just map 18, not 13.
Okay.
Lots 97 and 99.
Okay, so, yeah, it says, okay, this is 13-97, so let's go here. Yeah, 13-97 and 13-99.
Okay, and the RV section says 18.
Oh, it's map 18, lots 13-97, 13-99.
Okay, tax map, okay, yeah, there, map 18, yeah, lots 13-97 and 13-99.
That's what it said.
Yeah. Okay, motion by Dana, second by Rick for conditional approval. Any discussion? Sign that all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say nay. As I just shared, was affirmative, and plan is conditionally approved, and make sure you protect that dam area. That's important.
Thank you very much.
That block and line is what it really is.
I need to be 13 and paid.
Any other business that we have?
Mr. Chair, there's a bill in the read file from the Planning Commissioners Journal. Are people reading it?
I mean, I read it, but if, if we aren't generally reading it, we probably don't need to get it. Do they have an electronic version of it? I don't know, I can ask though. Yes, because
Well, I'm sure they have an electronic version of it, but you still have to buy the prescription, the subscription.
Subscription, they probably charge as much as
To, you know, to access
I say we keep getting it.
Does the board, would the board like to keep receiving the planning commissioners?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And you're not here next, please?
So I'm on vacation from 14th through the 28th, so I'll be in Russia.
Fine.
Yes, every trip to Russia is an adventure, believe me.
Hopefully the plane don't do what the last one did.
I know. I know. Well, we fly on the Lufthansa, it's very safe and secure, so within Russia we take the trains because it's very efficient and not the quickest, but it's reliable.
Mine is a hiking team.
Yeah, very unfortunate.
So a motion to adjourn?
Okay, motion to adjourn by Mary, second by Dana. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.